Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 7th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We're a little late starting. It's 7:20. Would you all please rise while we pledge allegiance to the flag? Pat?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could remain standing for a moment to have a moment of silence for Mr. William Sullivan, Bill Sullivan, longtime superintendent of the Rainham Schools prior to our regionalization. And this, before this became a town hall, this was named the William Sullivan School, and there still is a conference room. Mr. Sullivan passed away after a brief illness on Monday, and he certainly was a wonderful educational leader for the community, very, very well liked and respected, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know that, Pat. I wasn't aware. I knew he was in rehab, but I didn't know he was that bad. That's terrible. Okay. May I have a motion on the acceptance of the minutes?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any corrections?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. And just to put on the record, Mrs. Smith, that we are returning from executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 21. And I believe we had two votes that we can vote, we can announce an opening session. We voted to ask, if I've got this correct, we voted to ask our building inspector to forward three names for us, for someone to do, would we say, some consulting work on inspections?
I would say per diem inspections.
Per diem inspections, okay? And that was a unanimous vote?
You said two. Is there another one?
Oh, and also, I believe we also voted to, that Joe has graciously conceded to stab me in the back and ask me to work on the BR negotiations, the buyout with the former high school.
Yeah, I think I brought it as far as I could, and I welcome Ms. Riley's perspective to the debate, and hopefully she can close this out because it's been going on for
Way too long.
Yeah, since I was in the eighth grade, so.
And thank you for all your efforts on that, Joe.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Papai, would you like to give us your report, please?
Sure. Good evening. I have some updates from the Highway Department for August, really the work that's been going on in July. We've been busy with our road work. Richmond Street, we completed resurfacing, milling and resurfacing of that section of roadway between South Street West and South Main Street. The only remaining work on that road is to do the pavement markings, which will probably occur early September, be a little bit of time before that happens. Thank you. We're also in progress on White Street. Just want to clarify for any residents that think that might be finished, that that's the base layer out there now, and we have some raised castings, which caused a little bump in the traffic, but we did that for a reason, so that we wouldn't have to pay the extra money to lower them and then raise them again. So trying to save some costs there. It's about a $25,000 savings not to have to do it twice. So we'll start up on sidewalk construction in late September, and that'll go on probably four to five weeks. We'll do curbing and a new asphalt sidewalk between North Main and Pleasant, and then the opposite side of the street, we'll receive a Cape Cod berm, and then the turns into each side road, we'll also get a granite curbing there to protect the edges of the road and the properties on the corners. So follow that in the spring of next year will be the final surfacing of the road. So we're going to wait one season, let the road settle. If there's any water trenches or anything, there's been some construction. We don't want to pave it, the top surface right away, so we're going to let it sit through the winter. Also, the basketball court, we completed the parking lot and the repairs along the entrance road. Remaining work there, we're going to seal coat a portion of that old parking area to match it up, and then we're going to do some pavement markings for parking, just to help control the parking over there, and that work will be done.
That'll complete that whole area?
With the exception of, we received some bleachers, some furniture that that's going to be installed inside the court. We're going to just set one row of bleachers. We had poured a concrete pad to fasten a set of bleachers, too, to, just to kind of give it more of a sport environment in there, so. What else? Park and rec, I'm sorry, park and grounds crews have been out doing tree removal, mowing, lining the fields, irrigation, everything to try to keep the sporting activities going and try to keep the grass from burning as much as possible. It's been a tough summer. Solid waste, we had a very busy hazardous waste collection day. That was very successful. And lastly, on solid waste, the solar project, I forgot to mention the last time, but they're fully underway now with construction of that, and we expect that to go into late fall.
Oh, good. Very good. Any questions for Ed?
No, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no appointments this evening. We don't have any public hearings. Do we have any new business?
No, don't you.
Anything, Pat?
Not new business.
Okay. How about old business?
Yes, if I could, I've very slightly revised my goals and objectives, and just want to explain that this is obviously, you know, for the full year, so it's nothing that has to be done overnight. Some of it can be worked on as we go along. If I could basically just kind of go over it again with your indulgence, improve transparency to comply with all aspects of the open meeting law, enhance and maintain user-friendly town website, post selectmen's meeting minutes online as soon as possible, and I added, and encourage other town boards and commissions to do the same, and continue to coordinate with Ray Cam regarding programming cable casting of all town meetings, including selectmen's meetings and other boards and commissions, improve communication, establish a practice of notifying, I added, the selectmen's office and the selectmen of important developments, and I added this, establish a practice of notifying the townspeople of important developments and events. And I just want to personally apologize to the townspeople that I personally didn't do more to help notify people about the special town election that we had. I think we really dropped the ball on that. People did not know about it. I think we had 100 people that turned out and voted. I know when we voted to set the date for that, we did publicly invite representatives from the sewer commission to come in and speak about it and explain about the debt exclusion and what the impact would be on the taxes and so forth, but I think we need to also take the initiative to get that word out. We used to be able to count on reporters. I used to be one of them for years, and we always had that coverage. We don't anymore. Not that everybody reads the newspaper, but I think we need to really work on, you know, when it's something important like that, we've got to get the word out so people know about it, they have a right to know, and that's part of our responsibility. And again, I just apologize that I personally didn't take the initiative to do more about that, but I think we can all do a better job as far as that's concerned. Develop a system, and it ties in for closer communication and coordination among town boards and committees. As I said at the last meeting, we have great committees and great boards, but I think if we can coordinate a little bit better, I'm not sure, this is kind of an outline, I think we can work on this, and I can work with our town administrator and come back with an action plan, but maybe it's a question of having a summit once a year where we invite representatives from our different boards to come in and talk about what they're doing and try to build a little more of a team spirit to do that. I know everybody's busy, but I think it's really important that we coordinate. And continue to use our meeting as an informational forum for town-related news and information, and encourage the use of the Rainham channels as a forum also for town-related news and information. Review and revise our bylaws, that's ongoing. Review and revise our town policies. I think, you know, I know it's, probably they're all fine, but it doesn't hurt to take a second look at them. And I added this, review and revise as needed our job descriptions. That's some, an issue that has been brought to our attention. Everybody has a job description, I believe, but they're in different formats, and to give it some kind of consistency, I think I'm happy to work with, you know, Dave on that. And then the short and long-term planning, conduct a needs assessment for the town. I would like really to open that up to everybody. Work, and I think MMA can give us some advice on that. I'd like to put together a questionnaire that we can maybe put online and have people let us know, where would they like to see the town 10 years from now, 20 years from now? What are their priorities? What are their ideas? We have some really brilliant people out in the community that don't have the time to get involved in government per se, but they could give us some great ideas. And then, obviously, all of our town boards and town employees, we would like their input as well. Then establish a study committee to work on this needs assessment and look into government and staffing issues. I know, Joe, you have at some point, you recommended a kind of a finance person, and I've thrown out a human resource person. So we look at that, and also future space needs and what we have for space availability. And then develop a strategic plan for the town based on the needs assessment and create a five-year and a 10-year capital improvement plan based on that. I did reach out to Brendan Loftus, our chairman of the capital planning committee, because I wanted to make sure this was in conjunction with what his wonderful committee does and that would work together. And after discussing it with him, and also John Donahue, and he was involved in that study committee that recommended earlier this year about the need for a five-year and a 10-year plan, and thinking that once the capital planning committee finishes their work for this year, which leads into the town meeting, that at that point, this study committee could kick in, because we'd want some of the same players. Brendan Loftus said he would be willing to work on that, as did John Donahue. I know I spoke with our town planner, Mr. Bob Ayafredi, he said he would be willing to help coordinate that. So I think, in the meantime, we can start laying the groundwork for that, again, working with MMA, get some input from them, working on a needs assessment, and I just think, again, our town is in great shape financially and otherwise, but that's the time for us to kind of take a look forward and see where we want to be. I know we're in a good position.
In relation to that, Pat, when we leave here today, I have the old one.
Wonderful. The old book in my car that I'll give to you.
Excellent.
And it had, we had nine members that served on that committee, but you can see where we were at that time, and did we accomplish what we intended to
Excellent.
with that, and then go forward with that.
Excellent, excellent. And then the other thing is, as we made reference, review the Bridgewater-Rainham regional agreement and resolve any relevant issues. One reason, and I think I can say it publicly, that we've had the difficulty in trying to resolve the buyout of the old high school is because the agreement is absent on how that should be handled. It's also, the current agreement is also absent about what would happen if 10, 20, 30, 50 years from now, we ever decided to deregionalize. There's nothing in there that says what would happen as far as how, what would happen to the high school. So I think there are some issues there that we really need to take a look at. And then lastly, professional development for town officials and staff, mentioned conflict of interest training, so important. Ethics commission will provide that, not only for us, but I think for all of our town boards and town employees could come and take advantage of that. And open meeting law, public records law, Attorney General's Office will provide that training. And then, it's the meeting you and I went to, Marie, for the selectmen's regional meeting harassment issue is so, so important, and we need to really train everybody about that. So again, this is just a blueprint, and all I'm really looking for is a vote of support from my fellow members, and I think we can work on it as time goes on. Any input you might have.
Like I said, that short and long-term planning, to me, is the most important right about now, where we do have what we have. And you can see by the book that I have, which was the old one, where we were at that point in time, and did we accomplish any of the goals that we had? And if not, are they still there to be accomplished?
Right, exactly.
But that's the one that I would, I would work on.
I think it's comprehensive, and I had spent some time reviewing it over the past week. The only thing, and I would say it respectfully, Ms. Riley, I would disagree with your characterization that the bar was dropped on the election. I think the town clerk did a great job and did everything she could as the chief elections officer to advertise it. I can only speak for my involvement, because I don't know what the board's presence is, but I have Facebook and Twitter, and it was on both of those pages that I maintain. I have a website that I pay for out of my own pocket. I'm the only selectman who does that. The town clerk posted it in accordance with state law. The digital board was outside in front of town hall advertising it. This was also on the May town meeting warrant, so I think it's disingenuous for people to say they didn't know what was coming. I had concern that we would have a low turnout, which is why I originally suggested perhaps doing it at the primary in September. The sewer commission, at their discretion, requested this sooner, so we obliged them for that, but I don't know what more we can expect from the town clerk when you have an election in July. Your election, Ms. Riley, back in April, what, 500 people voted?
I know.
It's that last Saturday in April with a Monday following every year, and we still have low turnout. So we can always do more, I'll agree with you on that, but to say the bar was dropped and we could have done more, I disagree with it, and I don't think it's fair to the town clerk, because I think her hands are tied. I mean, she can't go out and door knock.
I didn't say anything criticizing the town clerk.
Excuse me, I was going to suggest that you didn't, you didn't mention the town clerk.
I did not.
And I, I certainly know, Marsha did everything she possibly could have.
She did everything she was supposed to. I said, proposition, and I appreciate what you do, but I know, I saw Facebook many comments about people not knowing about it, and I think the selectmen's office received comments as well from people.
But there's also only so much we can do because of what's called the Constitution and separation of powers. The town clerk is the chief elections officer. We only can go so far in our positions, and then you infringe upon her sovereign power and authority. And so whether or not you meant to direct those comments towards the clerk, that's how I interpreted it, because of my understanding of how government works.
Well, I appreciate your understanding of how government works, Mr. Pacheco, but I think we have an obligation to do whatever we can to try to inform the public.
Absolutely, and I think we can always do more.
Thank you. That was my whole point.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're done?
Yep.
Okay. David, would you like to give your report?
I would, Madam Chair.
Thank you, please.
Thank you very much. Ongoing projects in town, the North School, we see the light at the end of the tunnel. The outside concrete steps are being repaired as we speak. They should be finished this week. I have a cleaning service coming in to give us a quote for the entire interior of the building, and the final painting should be done either this week or next week. So we had a scheduled inspection by the Mass Department of Public Health Air Quality Division, sort of a free consultation. They performed an inspection for air quality as it relates to the employees and visitors of town hall. They haven't produced a report yet, but the feedback that I got from the inspector was very good, with only some minor suggestions for improvements. Animal control officer, updates, the new vehicle that was purchased will be lettered by next week, and coordinating with the state-approved vendor for shelving and lights to be finished as soon as possible. Reminder, Ray Cam has filled its need for a new board member, but the historical commission still needs two more members. Is that correct, Ms. Riley? Please contact Ms. Riley or the selectmen's office if you're interested. Upcoming things, the next selectmen's meeting will be two weeks from tonight, August 21st at 7:00 PM. Next department head meeting will be August 23rd in this room at 9:30. Southeastern Mass Health Group meeting will be September 13th in Seekonk, and the Southeast Regional Supply Group meeting will be September 12th at 9:00 AM in Mansfield.
Questions for David?
I just have one, Madam Chair, if we could, and to you too, Madam Chair. Can we get an expense report for the North School? We had got one a couple of years ago, but we haven't in multiple years as to, I know the amount of money that's been allocated, but we've never got a report as to the expenses per project, and I think that would be awfully helpful for us to see.
Sure, I think David can give you that.
I can do that.
Great, thank you.
Anything, Pat?
Just going back to Dave's report on the HVAC issues and the inspection. Dave, I know one recommendation, I believe it was made verbally, was possibly getting a dehumidifier for downstairs where they have a problem.
Yep.
Have we moved on that, or can we go?
Well, I was going to wait and see which rooms they're specific. She did say, based on humidity, humidity levels, that the, just a couple of rooms that should be targeted, and it's going to cost money, though, to get those installed, so. And I'd like to get temporary ones, not, you know, something on wheels, nothing permanent. However, if there is something, I have the HVAC gentleman who works on our system from time to time, if there's a way we can solve the problem at the source, then, and if it's more cost-effective to do it that way, I'd like to look into that a little more.
I think in the long run, that's probably going to be a better option. It's definitely out there, because you have a lot of institutions that have climate-controlled rooms, IT server rooms, document, secure document storage, so what the cost would be in the scope of work, I don't know, but I think in the long run, if we have a humidity problem, instead of buying these units that are taking up valuable floor space, we make that investment in upgrading the system.
Yeah, and, you know, we'll see what the cost will be, I'm sure, you know.
As long as we move forward on it, because obviously, we don't want health issues to ensue, for sure. Also, I happened to watch the planning board hearing last night. A lot of residents concerned about proposed development coming on Route 44 that would directly impact the Judson Street neighborhood. I know, Joe, you happened to speak as a, on your own behalf, as an elected official. Since we are the Board of Health, I, and I don't know, I just throw this out there, I didn't know if it would be, would it be appropriate for us as a Board of Health to send a letter of our concern to the planning board based on the possibility of air quality issues and noise issues and possibly violating a couple of our bylaws? I'm sure the planning board will do their due diligence, but if it might support them to get a letter from the Board of Health?
Yeah, I have no issues. I actually had my selectmen's report as well, Ms. Riley. I think the project's a metrosity, actually. I think it's not in line with what our priorities on 44 have been. I think it's disingenuous for the residents to have been expecting a business park, and now potentially they're going to be getting a truck depot. The one in Shrewsbury is an ISOA. I think outside of the public health concerns, there's the, and as I alluded to in my comments, the public safety concerns.
Traffic issues.
Traffic issues, major trucks driving the roads enough familiar with, and having a 24-hour facility, where an industrial accident could occur, which would prompt police and fire to have to respond. It's one thing for them to have to respond 10 hours a day to any of our businesses, but to be on that high alert and have that capacity 24 hours a day, six days a week, I just don't think it's a good project for Rainham at all, and that's why I expressed my comments, and as you alluded to, they were my comments as an independent elected official and not representative of the board, but I would be delighted if my two colleagues would join me in opposition to the project.
Absolutely. I would make that, or if you want to make that as a motion, make that as a motion, that we send a letter expressing our concerns as the Board of Health?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I just want to mention the Purple Heart Community dedication is tomorrow evening at 6:30 at South School. And just one other thing I mentioned for Dave to follow up on, too, is that when I went to the training for selectmen, it was strongly advised that the selectmen have town of, in our case, Town of Rainham emails, because actually, any business that we receive should be on that, because it's part of the town record. And without that, then if someone wanted to access public records, they would, they would need to listen, to read through all of our personal emails, and I'm sure that would bore people to death. But if Dave could follow up on that as well.
I've actually already started that. I've spoken with our IT department, and Tim is, has ideas. I thought he'd be done by now, but he's been pulled away in a couple of different directions, so perhaps next week.
Thank you.
But he's definitely on top of it.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mrs. Smith, I'm sorry, I didn't know we switched to selectmen's reports, so I do have one other thing.
Well, we did a little.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's okay, go ahead, Joe.
The only other thing I would add is I'd like to have back on the agenda in two weeks the Assistant Town Administrator position. I had asked Mr. Flaherty to put together packets for all of you with those who applied, their resumes, cover letters, and so give us two weeks to review, and then we can make a determination at that point as to how we want to proceed in terms of interviews and so forth, but I want it on the agenda for two weeks. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. You've covered everything. Correspondence. This has to do with the finance, and it comes from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Department of Revenue, and this is to remind us of the requirements that municipalities with a population of 5,000 or more must annually honor before August 1st furnished to the Department of Revenue a report of all providers. Do you know if that's been done?
I forwarded that email to Mike King, and he's.
And he's taking care of that, okay, so that will take care. Notification of construction. Project location is the Middle Borough Rainham Route 495 from Route 18 to Route 24. Emergency pothole repairs. This is from Mass DOT.
I believe that's already done.
That's already done?
Yeah.
While we have that here. This is from the Park and Rec Department, and it attaches the estimate they have for the replacement of the Burke and Griffith signs at Borden Colony.
I motion to approve their recommendation. They have three bids, they're looking to award it to the little bidder and let them get started on the project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They can. Park and Rec. And here is a letter from Xfinity talking about our programming agreements that we have with them. And as part of their ongoing commitment to keep us informed, they want to inform you that Comcast's right to continue carrying Ben Sports' bells in Benzón Espanol expired on July 31st, 2018. As a result, we lost authorization to continue carrying these networks as part of our lineup on August 1st. We want to carry these sports networks and provide our customers with the best value. To date, however, Sports, Ben Sports has been unwilling to provide agreements that would enable us to carry its contents in a way that reflects the value of these networks in a very competitive marketplace. Since we lost authorization to carry this sports program, we are preparing to activate Comcastfax.com to keep our customers informed during this period, so no one will lose track of all of the sports things, okay? So that's where you have to go now, Comcast.fax.com. And that's from Catherine Maloney. I have an application for an entertainment license for the brewery at 95 Ryan Drive, and what they're going to have evidently is guitars, keyboard, harmonica, and drums.
gentleman's here in the audience, if you want to speak to him.
You are here regarding this, sir? Would you like to say something in regards to it?
I can't.
Sure, please step up to the microphone and tell me who you are and what you're going to do.
My name is Kevin Merritt, and hopefully, we are going to have acoustic guys come in on Thursdays and entertain our patrons.
I have no issues with it, I'll admit, I haven't been yet. I know friends who have, and they said it's amazing and great beer, and so I guess I'm partly waiting for them to buy some for me first. No, I would, I would motion to approve, and I'm glad you're doing well so far, and look forward to hopefully much more success for you.
Oh, thank you.
While you're here, what are the dates at the times that you are open?
We're Thursday, 5 to 9, Friday, 5 to 9, and Saturday, 12 to 8.
Thank you.
In September, we may come back and see if we can be open on Sunday some hours, just to get some cans out to people that are going to the football games and stuff.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we'll be back for that later.
Can I have a motion on this?
I do.
Pat, did you second this?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Yes, you may entertain us on Thursday evenings.
Thank you.
Yeah. One of the other things, you guys approved us for private events whenever we want to, and so we are raising money for Pint for Prostate Cancer. We raised money for the Weymouth police officer that got killed in line of duty, and the other lady, and so we're doing some charity work, and we're going to do that in the hours that you guys let us do that, so.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
That's that letter. This is a letter from our town clerk who says to Ed Buckley, "I'd like to thank you and your staff for your recent help in setting up and taking down the voting booths, tables, et cetera, at the polls during our recent special town election. I received many compliments about the manner in which the gymnasium was set up. You and your staff continue to be invaluable to our office and the election process. I very much appreciate the time you take out of your busy schedule to help the election process run smoothly. Thank you again sincerely, Marsha Sylvia, Town Clerk." And you do.
Does Miss Sylvia want to add anything?
Want to add anything, ma'am?
To my left, I have to add, well.
Yes.
No. I'm sorry, I wanted to be a secret. I'm sorry, I wanted it to be a secret.
There are no secrets here, Marsha.
I know. I don't need to add to the letter, except that I think everybody knows what a great job they do, and it is behind the scenes, as many of the election process is behind the scenes, and people don't know that we do. And Ed and his department are very grateful, they constantly, they're right there for us. Even if you're, you know, you've got Blacktop, and, you know, you've got Manholes and all that stuff that you guys are doing, Richmond Street, I really appreciate it. I do, I do, and you do it all the time.
If I could, Mrs. Smith, there is an awful lot of work that I know goes in your office, too, in preparing, preparing for that and everything, so thank you for all your efforts on that.
Right, well, that, I don't know if I can mention it, I don't know, was there a question about the last special election?
Well, just, we said we were just disappointed there was such a light turnout, and wish that we on the board could try to do more to help promote it in the future.
Right, because it's the same amount of work, whether we get 11,000 voters that we have or 144.
And I'm sure it's very frustrating for you to go through all that work.
Extremely expensive, if we break it down for a voter. But, you know, we do what we have to do, and I do everything that I have to do, I'm required to do, and I can only do so much, I have to be neutral. People come to the counter and they'll ask us, I can't tell you what, I can't, I can't do that. So if there are any questions about it, I'm here to answer them.
What was the final vote?
I think it was 120, I don't, I wasn't planning on coming in here, but I think, but I think I did it. It's posted, you know, so.
Thank you.
But it did pass. And we had people that were.
Summertime elections, obviously, as Joe alluded to earlier, very difficult.
Very difficult. It's a Tuesday or a Saturday, or, you know, but we were here when the returns came in, and we stayed until they were, so. But if there are any questions about it, because there was a lot of work, and I welcome anybody to come in and see the work that's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Clerk.
As usual, good job. This is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from Senator Mark Pacheco, who wants to make us aware of the funds within the state, that funds within the state budget for fiscal year 2019 that I was proud to have adopted in the Senate budget and upheld in the conference committee budget. $10,000 was allocated for the Rainham Council on Aging, which was very nice. The 2019 budget also invests in cities and towns across the Commonwealth to strengthen local services and boost local aid for education, infrastructure, public safety, and other community needs. While budget season is never easy, I was pleased to sponsor this important community item. The budget now goes to the governor for approval. Thank you to the board for your continued hard work, it is an honor to work with you, and it's a very great honor to work with the senator. He's always been there for us anytime we need anything. Just a note of information that we will be going to an appeal session for the Smithy's Filling Station, and it's appeal from the action of the Town of Rainham Board of Selectmen for denying the transfer of license application of Smithy's Filling Station to be exercised at 1285 Broadway Rainham, and this will be on September 6th, 2018. We have one tag day, and that is for Taunton Pop Warner Football and the Cheerleaders, and it's August 20th to the 23rd for football, 27 to 31 for the Cheerleaders, and November 10th and 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And there is no press here, any emergency business?
None.[1780.42]